Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the June 4th City of Eugene Planning Commission meeting. My name is John Borowski and I'm the chair. I'll go ahead and have the rest of the staff, the table introduce themselves, starting with planning commissioners.
I'm Kristen Taylor.
John Jaworski.
And Bill Randall.
And staff.
Gabe Flock, Senior Planner with the city.
Nick Joyello, Associate Planner for the city.
Lauren Summers, Assistant City Attorney.
Robin Hostic, Planning Director.
All right, thank you. We're here today to do deliberations on the appeals hearing for the Capitol Hill PUD, PDT 17-1, for the commission and everybody who's in attendance here. I think what we're going to do is we're going to run through this in a couple of different ways. We'll get a little bit of a precursor from staff, we'll go through and decide on the issue of whether or not to allow new evidence in that was raised by one of the applicants, make that decision there, and then we'll proceed on to the applicants and the appellant's appeal issues, one at a time, basically, until we get through them. Does that sound okay to you folks? All right.
Want to ask a quick question? It sounds like, if needed, we have the potential to add another day?
Yeah. What we had talked about, we'll look and see how far along we've gotten as far as today. What I'm thinking is that we would probably want to do the Thursday one. That way, if we still don't get through it, we could have the following on the 12th. The other issue that I'm planning on is Commissioner Baker is not here. He will be able to be at the other subsequent meetings. So if there are, I don't want to go through and rehash all of the issues that we've gone through, although I do want to give him an opportunity if he has specific concerns about any of the ones that we've already decided on. So at Thursday, I may give him, you know, five or 10 minutes at the beginning to bring stuff up. Unless it's a clear four to one vote, I don't think I'm going to be doing a lot of revisiting on all the ones that we issued, that we decide on today.
Okay.
But that's kind of, I still want to hear his voice on the thing. He may have points that may be significant enough to change votes. So I will want to give him the voice, but we're not going to go through and revisit every one of them once he's in the room.
Okay.
So that's kind of the plan that we're looking for. So do you want to start off with a little bit staff introduction?
Can I give an overview?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to touch on the highlights of this project that was first submitted back in March of 2017. And then after several time extensions, we had a public hearing on March 7th, 2018. And the hearings official made a decision to approve the planned unit development with 20 conditions of approval, and that was issued on April 20th of 2018. Briefly, the approval was for 34 single-family lots. Two of those lots have the option to have up to three attached single-family units on it, so there's a potential for either 34 to 38 single-family units for the whole project. It also included improvements to Capital Drive adjacent to the site with new road construction, sidewalks and gutters, and also the addition of a private drive, couple of drive with the same road improvement, sidewalk and gutter. The site is approximately 13 and 1/2, I think maybe 13.6 plus acres. Of that, about 4 and 1/2 acres are to be preserved in their natural state as both either Common Track A and also B, C and D, smaller pockets, and also individual preserved areas on a number of the lots. And there would be upgrades to the water infrastructure to the site, and also the improvements that they proposed with the roads would allow for the safe movement turnaround for fire and large vehicles within the development, which currently does not exist. After that decision, we had two appeals filed, one by the applicant and one by the Neighborhood Response Committee. It's also referred to as the Joint Response Committee, I think. And the applicant appealed basically on two main issues, about the applicability of South Hill Study and also on the application of needed housing criteria and clear and objective standards. The other appeal by the Neighborhood Group regards a number of issues, 31 topics or 31 issues they had. I don't, I'm not going to go into all the issues. I think we're going to tackle those individually. And we had the first appeal hearing on May 22nd, where you heard from both appellant's and you heard from some interested parties with testimony, and here we are today.
All right. So with that being said, I think the fir, yes?
Do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So can, a couple of questions that are just on the site plan for clarification, because I wasn't clear. In the AIS, it actually is clear, but just can you describe for the group where the barrier is between Hendrix Park and the development?
I might go off the point, because it's just easier. So this is turned, so this way is north, I think everybody understands that.
Yeah.
So Capital Drive exists right now, it comes up, and it kind of just, I think it's kind of gravel, gravel right here towards the end. And the barrier that was proposed would be between the last access point, whether it's the existing one for a house that's over here that's not part of this development, or wherever the access point for this lot ends up being, the barrier would be past that access point, but before you get to the actual end where it abuts Hendrix Park.
Perfect.
That was the way the condition was written.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And can you kind of briefly describe, just more in summary? And I think I get it, I just want to make sure, because there's staff comments and then public work comments, or Fire Marshal. So essentially, what is the fire access kind of plan? I mean, obviously, the loop's pretty obvious, but in terms of some of the access lanes, actually, maybe I'm not using the right term, for essentially the driveway connections that are for multiple lots. So can you just briefly describe in summary, kind of, fire comments? It's really around tax lot 7, 6, 5, 8, 9.
Oh, the ones at the end, that have the private driveway?
Yeah, yeah, mhm, and then tax lot 18 and 19.
Well, I think the intent is, as far as fire, they can obviously come in and come down a couple of, and they get to that driveway, and the way they explain it to us, they can drive into something about 150 feet. They like to have the ability to back up no further than 150 feet.
Okay, so they're essentially going to be driving in, it's within that 150 feet, they can access the sites, and then they back out.
Right, and I think it's important to recognize, too, that the precise, specific details of driveway location and home siting are going to be reviewed against Fire Code requirements at a later stage to make sure their issues are met.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
So the first issue that we have to get into is the question that was raised by Bill Close's letter about the fact that new evidence was introduced at the hearing, and whether or not we want to allow that or exempt that. So I'm going to let Lauren speak to that a little bit, and then we'll have to make a decision on that before we move forward to the deliberations.
So, thank you, Commissioner Borowski. As you mentioned, the applicant did file a motion to strike, and they are asking the Planning Commission to strike portions of the neighbor's appeal statement alleging that it includes both new evidence and new issues that were not raised before the hearings official. And just as a reminder, talking about the Planning Commission's role here today, this is an on-the-record appeal, so the Planning Commission is limited to the evidence that the hearings official saw. You should not be considering new evidence that the hearings official did not have the chance to consider unless the Planning Commission affirmatively decides to reopen the record, in which, if you wanted to consider new evidence, you would need to reopen the record to allow other parties the ability to respond. So at this point, the applicant is not asking you to reopen the record, the applicant is saying there is some, the applicant believes at least that there is some new evidence in the neighbor's appeal statement that you should reject and not consider. Another issue for the Planning Commission is that, under our code, the basis of an appeal is limited to issues raised before the hearings official. So if there is an appeal issue that was not initially raised before the hearings official, the Planning Commission cannot consider that. And the applicant is saying in their motion to strike that the neighbors have raised both new evidence that wasn't available to the hearings official and new appeal issues that were not raised before the hearings official, and is asking you to reject those materials. The question for you today is whether you agree that there is new evidence and new appeal issues. If you do, then you can reject those things. If you do not, then you don't need to reject them, and you can proceed to consider them as part of your consideration of the appeal. So I think the easiest way to do it is to walk through the applicant's motion and the neighbor's response. They did provide a response to the Planning Commission. And the neighbor's response actually really helpfully identified both the applicant's motions to strike and the neighbor's responses to those motions. So if you are looking for one document that contains all of the information related to the motion to strike, I would direct you to the neighbor's response, which I believe is attached to this AIS. Is that correct?
It is.
And to inform your discussion of the motion to strike, I just wanted to direct you to the definition of evidence that is in the Eugene Code and also echoes a definition in the statutes. And Nick put it up there on the screen for us. Evidence is defined as facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or non-compliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. So you're looking at facts, documents, data, that are related to an approval criterion, You are allowed to consider argument as part of this appeal process. So if you find that some of the appeal statements that are identified by the applicant as new evidence aren't really new evidence, in your opinion, but instead constitute argument or something else, then that's fair game under our appeal process, and you can consider them. So that is kind of my background to all of this. I will say that, in my estimation, the applicant's motion to strike consists of eight new evidence arguments and three new issues arguments, and I can kind of help flag those for you as we go through them, if you think that would be helpful.
Very good. Okay. So I'm looking to the commission to, do you want to just go through and do these one at a time? I'm working from the, like I said, the one that the Response Committee provided. It's on page nine of our AIS. It goes through, number one, it gives both sides. I think we can just go through and-
That's attachment C.
Yeah. Patient, yeah.
I can also bring it up on the screen here in a moment, if that helps.
I'm looking at the pack, the one that was sent out.
Our packet for today.
Yeah, the today's packet.
I think it's-
And it says to me, page nine, at the bottom.
Okay. Attachment C.
Dated May 21st, 2018. Okay. So that's kind of where I'm working from. Does that sound okay to you guys? All right. So with that, we'll go to the page 1, paragraph 4, that he-
I actually don't have it.
That's fine. We've got, I think we all have it in front of us and can follow along. So I will open up discussion on this.
I normally save the first page.
And we do have to make a decision on each one of these, so, yea, nay, or, and this is a, this is a, the first one was a new evidence one.
Correct.
Okay. So I guess the question is, do you believe that they introduced new evidence by saying that all 112 people? That's kind of how I read it. Commissioner Jaworski?
Well, they didn't say all. They said essentially, and essentially doesn't mean all to me, so I agree that with the, in this one, I agree with the element against-
That it's not new evidence?
Not new.
Anybody else?
Well, I guess not one private individual offered testimony at the hearing in favor of the development. It seemed like that was a little, not necessarily exactly true, at least what I was reading. So I guess there's just some languaging that is questionable for me, but-
So I think I would just direct the commission's attention back to the definition of evidence.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you think this is evidence? Do you think it is new? And then I would also say that in the response, the neighbors noted that they intended the hearing to be the public hearing, not any evidence submitted into the record at all. So I don't know if you recall what happened at the public hearing, but I believe the neighbors are saying that no individual testified in favor of the application at the public hearing.
If it's helpful, I noticed the response from the neighbors indicated that the Close letter does not demonstrate the statements apply to approval criteria, and therefore the issues identified in the Close letter are immaterial to the pending appeal. And so when I look at the definition, I think about whether it's facts or evidence related to the approval criteria. It's really more about who's in favor and who's not, and not specific to the criteria, from staff's perspective.
Mhm, okay.
So for me, I can live with it's not new evidence. That's the way I would vote on this one. Okay. So can we get a show of hands that it's not new evidence? Okay. So first one's taken. Second one is on the evidence that the road distance and elevation distance between the site is new evidence. I'd like to hear discussion on that. Either it is new evidence, it's not new evidence, or it's facts that do not go to approval criteria, or that is an argument. We got to give some direction here, folks. I'm in, my thing is that it's not, I would say it's not new evidence that's going to affect the outcome, one way or another.
Yeah, I didn't necessarily see that either. I'm curious to know if staff or legal had any concerns with it, just because you, I mean, there were a lot of documents, and although I went through them all, I could have missed something. So I didn't see.
I defer to planning staff for specific record citations, but I would point out to the commission that the neighbor's response does point to prior evidence in the record that they say they are referring to.
Yep. Yep, I don't see a problem with it.
All right. I'm, I'll take the lead on this. I don't feel that this is new evidence, and I can live with it being in the record. All in favor? Okay. All right. Next one is appeal issue number 10, page 14. Close states the entire appeal issue is based on evidence about the distinction between the professional qualifications of an arborist or a forester. This evidence is not in the record.
So if it's helpful to the commission, I can just read you the appeal issue, because it's not included in the document. So appeal issue number 10 is, "The hearings official erred by failure to ensure the applicant satisfied the requirements of Criterion 4 by waiving the requirement for a licensed arborist on the professional design team, and by disregarding the evidence provided by Jim Merewine, registered professional forester." So that is the appeal issue-
Right.
-that the applicant is asserting is based on evidence about the distinction between professional qualifications of arborists and foresters, and that that evidence of the distinction between the two certifications is not in the record. In their response, the neighbors point to a particular statement in James Merewine's report that says specifically that forestry focuses on silviculture. So it talks about what forestry is. The piece of evidence pointed to by the neighbors doesn't specifically reference arborists, or, in my reading, the difference between foresters and arborists.
Well, I'll jump in this time.
Yeah.
You're welcome. It seems to me that, I mean, for me, the real issue is the Planning Director being able to waive that requirement, and so I'm not sure leaving this in the record is a problem, you know, from my perspective, you know.
Yeah.
When we get to that.
That's where I was, too. When I went to the thing, the issues that jumped out at me were not the distinctions between an arborist and a forester, so I-
I guess that gets back to the difference between new evidence and argument, that you're, when you're talking about argument, so.
Yes, and-
For me, anyway.
That's a good point, Commissioner Randall. If in fact, Planning Commission does not reject something that Luba later decides was new evidence, but your decision doesn't rely on that new evidence, it's a little bit no harm, no foul. So if we, you know, if you are clear that something is new evidence at this point, I would encourage you to reject it. But if you don't feel that it is, and Luba later decides something differently, as long as your decision is not based on that particular piece of evidence, the decision should still be upheld.
Then I guess the question that I would have then is, are we allowed to revisit this? So that, let's say we're starting to, we're starting to do appeal issue 10, and it does weigh into the consideration, we would have to reopen that. I mean, because it's hard to say that, you know, we're going to, we're going to not have this be part of the evidence, and that-
And I guess what I was trying to say, from my perspective, is I don't think this, from the way I was looking at appeal issue 10, really matters, because I think appeal issue 10 is different in the waiver, rather than in the difference between forester and arborist. So that's, I guess, the way I'm approaching it.
Commissioner Randall, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm hearing that you would not advocate rejecting this evidence because you don't think it will be applicable to the commission's consideration of the appeal issue.
Correct, yeah.
I'm in agreement for a similar argument. I do, anyways, yeah, I understand, and that's where my hesitation in some of these issues is, just once we get into the peel issues, I think it censers their straw.
Right.
Well, I guess if we take in the evidence now, then really, as we digest the other appeal items, we've already said yes, so we kind of knew need to be committed at this point, it sounds like.
I think it is cleaner-
Yeah, yeah.
...from an appeal perspective, if we can deal with evidentiary issues at the beginning, and then it will be clear that the commission either decided to reject something and not consider it, or is considering it as part of the whole record. However, you know, if you got to a point where you felt like, oh, I see something differently now, I do feel that something is new evidence, I'd like to reject it later, you could do that, and it might just be a little bit trickier for me to defend it on appeal, but I would do my best.
Yeah, and I mean, again, for me, it's, I think it's six on one, half dozen on the other, because I could reject this and say it was new evidence, and still make, I think, still make a decision on appeal issue 10 without this. And I could allow it in, and I think I could make an appeal issue, you know, make a decision on appeal issue 10, not using this evidence at all.
Yeah.
So if I allow it, you know, who's going to appeal it, I guess, is the question, you know? So I'm six one, half dozen on the other. For me, in that case, I would lean towards saying it is new evidence, then I don't even have to look at it and think about it. And if they, and then if on appeal, they say, no, it wasn't new evidence, well, okay, I made a mistake on that one, but I don't think it's going to come in on appeal issue 10 for myself, so.
And I guess that was my thought, is for me, I don't think that will affect my decision on appeal issue 10, one way or the other, whether it's in or out.
Right.
Yeah, it's interesting, so, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, because it does, so if Bill Close is saying this entire, so, anyways, I don't, I can't say it clearly, I have to think about it a little bit.
So it's, I think, Commissioner Taylor, what you might be getting at is whether the applicant is asking you to reject the entire appeal issue, or just the-
Definition of arborist and forester.
Yeah, sort of the underpinnings, or the argument.
Yeah, the way it's written, actually, I'm struggling with it.
So my understanding is, just based on my reading of the motion to strike, is that the applicant is asking you to reject kind of the argument underlying the appeal issue, not necessarily the appeal issue itself. In other places, the applicant has asked you to reject the whole appeal issue.
Yeah. Okay.
I was confused when I read this, because I don't think it even relates, relates to appeal issue number 10. To me, I viewed that appeal issue, we're not getting there yet, as a process question. If, in later appeals, if they're trying to distinguish what an arborist says versus what a forester says, I could see that, if it was an appeal. But as reference to appeal issue 10, I don't think it has any relevance at all.
So I think, I mean, I feel like I'm hearing a lot of the same things from the commissioners.
Yeah.
So I guess I do need you to make a decision on this particular motion to strike, and maybe it would be helpful to direct your attention back to the definition of evidence. You know, do you believe that the appeal issue consists of facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance with an approval criterion?
So if we say no, how would we vote? That it is new evidence or not new evidence?
Then it would not be new evidence.
Okay. Then I feel comfortable voting no.
I voted no. Vote no.
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Okay. So at that one, we're at three to one on no. I'm going to go back to where I was at. Where am I at? I lost my pages, because I was going back and forth. Help me out here, people.
Page 10.
Appeal issue 20.
Okay, so next is appeal number 23?
Yeah.
And this is about EWEB paying its proportionals, or having a letter written saying that they would pay. And I'll take discussion on this.
There are kind of a few different pieces. I believe there are two, or, I'm sorry. One, motion to strike evidence, and two, motions to strike issues underneath this appeal issue 23. So the first motion to strike evidence is that the applicant is arguing the statement that typically, quote, "Typically a document that purports to create a large financial obligation would be secured in some manner, optimally by a cash deposit or the subject property," and- property," end quote, is a new evidentiary statement. And the neighbors have responded that it is not new because there was a similar statement included in Susan Hoffman's March 30, 2018, response to Shermer testimony email. And that similar statement was, "The obligation is not secured in any manner. There is no asset mentioned that supports the owner's obligation to meet any future financial requirement. Optimally, this obligation should be secured by the land." So the neighbors are saying the appeal sentence is not new evidence because there is similar evidence already in the record.
Since that, and I went back and checked that letter, and she did say that to me, that's not new evidence. It was raised then by her. And I don't know if it was responded to because I couldn't read it all, but, no, I agree that that's not new evidence.
Okay. I think I can go with that as well. All right. Okay, next one is Appeal Issue Number 24.
Yeah, but there's two other parts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There are a couple of sub-issues. So then, the next motion to strike is that Item F on Page 24 of the neighbor's appeal says that there is no indication that the city manager has reviewed or approved the form, the EWEB form. And so the applicant is alleging that this is a new objection that was not raised below, so that the hearings official did not have the opportunity to consider that, and therefore it falls outside of the scope of issues that can be raised on appeal and the Planning Commission can consider. The committee responds that Susan Hoffman had raised a similar list of issues related to the EWEB agreement, and that that list, in her previous submission, said there were problems with the agreement, including but not limited to, and then she listed several specific issues. But the neighbors do not point to this specific objection that the city manager has not reviewed or approved the form being previously raised. So in my mind, I think the question for the Commission is, is raising the adequacy of the issue of the document below sufficient to kind of umbrella any arguments on appeal related to the adequacy of the document, whether those specific arguments were raised below? Or does the Commission believe that its authority is limited to consider issues and arguments that were specifically raised before the hearings official, including some of those sub-issues? Does that make sense?
I think so. And I'll jump in with my first thought. Yes, please. Is, it seems to me that the phrase "including but not limited to" isn't good enough to warrant including something that is kind of like that at all. That all-encompassing thing, so that if something comes up that's, you know, the whole idea is to raise the issue with sufficient specificity in that, and I'm not sure that this meets that from my perspective. So I'd be inclined to reject this as new evidence.
That's enough to convince me.
Just because I could say sufficient specificity.
And again, to me, the appeal issue is broader than whether or not it was signed for me. So to have it stricken isn't going to weigh me one way or another, I believe. I think there's other arguments that are more substantive in that one. So I can vote to strike this one.
I'll vote to strike it, I just can't find it. When I went to C and looked under the Issue Number 23, I can't find any reference that's called F or things that even talk about the city manager. When I look under attachment C for Issue 23, so I'm a little confused as to what he's...
I think this is going back to, or the original stuff.
Yeah, it's the original.
Oh, so it's going back to one of the full pages.
One of the full.
Okay, I can go along with that.
So if the Commission wants to reject something, I'd like a formal motion to do that. And so if I may.
Yes.
Someone could move to reject Item F on Page 24 of the appeal statement submitted by...
JS, Joint Response Committee.
The Joint Response Committee of the Fairmount Neighbors Association and the Laurel Hill Valley Citizens.
So moved.
I'll second that motion. At this point, is there any other discussion on it? Okay, so we'll take a vote now. All in favor of the motion, four to nothing.
One more sub-issue under Appeal Item 23, and this is similar. So again, Sub Item L under Appeal Issue 23 on Page 24 of the neighbor's appeal challenges whether the applicant's signatures on the document are, have been verified. And the applicant is again saying, that wasn't an argument that was specifically raised before the hearings official. And the committee has the same response as it did to the previous item to say, well, we said including but not limited to.
I would feel the same way about this one.
And I concur. So I would move to strike Item L on Page 25 of the challenges, whether the applicant's signatures on the comment document are real or forged. Second? All in favor? Okay. Okay, next one. Appeal Issue Number 24, Page 26. In Item 3, the opponent makes an evidentiary assertion about the testimony of the City of Eugene Scott Gillespie. He states his professional opinion about road safety. The opponent's appeal describes the testimony as demonstrably erroneous and a false claim. Opponent's made, and then it goes on to give his thing. Response Committee said...
The Response Committee argues that those issues were discussed in a submission by Paul Conti. So they are in the record. This is another new evidence issue. So again, you can, you know, direct our attention back to the definition of evidence. Are we talking about facts, documents, data, or other information to demonstrate compliance with an approval for it?
I mean, theoretically, it could fall into other information offered, but again, I don't believe that that sentence is going to sway me one way or another on the approval criteria.
Sorry, I've been trying to load this document so I don't have to reference my, my notes, and it's still loading. So I apologize, that's why I'm not as docative.
So just to be thorough, I should point out that the Response Committee pointed to testimony submitted by Paul Conti and also to testimony submitted by Mr. Severian.
Yeah, so I don't, in my view, I don't think it's new evidence.
Yeah, I would agree.
Mr. Jaworski?
I agree.
All right, so that one we'd say is not new evidence, we can move on.
Can I just maybe add to that? Part of my reasoning, too, is the demonstrably erroneous and false claim issue, I think, whether that's true or not, it still gets to the approval criteria of the road safety. And so for me, that's, fits that document and data information, so that's why I would vote to leave it in.
Okay, next one is on Appeal Item Number 28, Page 32. And it states that "The development of the proposed Capitol Hill PUD would permanently damage and deplete the environmental quality of the wooded hillside, not just within the site but certainly off-site and adjacent neighborhoods and beyond. The allegation of permanent damage is an evidentiary statement that is not supported in the record." And then the committee responded.
So the committee offered a couple of specific statements from James, I hope I'm pronouncing his name right, Merewine's conclusions, as well as the committee's response document. I think perhaps the question for the Planning Commission is whether those statements are equivalent to an allegation of permanent damage. And again, whether the statement that development of the proposed PUD would permanently damage is facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance with the approval criteria. So question one is, is it evidence? And question two, if it is evidence, is it already in the record to the Commission's satisfaction?
I'll go ahead and jump in then. I think, from my perspective, the phrase "permanent damage" takes it just one step farther from what was in the original. And looking at these quotes that were listed here, I don't see where either one of those necessarily constitutes permanent damage. And so I think from that perspective, I'd be inclined to call that new evidence.
You know, if I could load this, I would be able to quote it, but that's the notes that I have as well.
Commissioner Jaworski, anything on this one?
Yeah, I think, I think those couple of words are the only things that are problems.
Right. Okay, so it's, my feeling is, I hear that the Commission is leaning towards that that, the phrase "permanent damage" would be new evidence. In that case, we would need a motion that says that on Appeal Item 28, Page 32, the section that deals with permanent damage is... Well, you want to read it?
So the question for the Commission then, I think, too, as you and Commissioner Randall have identified, and Commissioner Jaworski have identified, is, does the Commission, if you decide you wish to strike something or reject something, do you want to reject the words "permanent damage" only? Or do you want to reject the entire sentence that was identified by the applicant? The applicant identified a sentence, but then said that the allegation of permanent damage is an evidentiary statement. So I'm not sure what the applicant is asking you to do. You have the ability to strike that entire sentence or simply to strike permanent damage?
Yeah, he even states, "The allegation of permanent damage is an evidentiary statement." I think he's only talking about those two words, in my mind. I would only want to strike those two words.
I can live with that.
Live with that.
Yeah, it seems like the other documents, there is some consistency without the word. Like Commissioner Randall said, it just, that particular word really does take it to a different level based on the evidence in the record.
Okay, so in that case, I would say that the Commission, move the Commission to remove the phrase "permanent damage" from that sentence as new evidence?
So the, a motion to reject the phrase "permanent damage" as found in Appeal Issue Number 28 of the Joint Response Committee's appeal statement.
Item 2, environmental quality.
Thank you.
And for me, I could just, the one that I get is permanent. You know, I could, I could live with even damage still being in there, but permanent is pretty, a pretty long-term indefinite thing that I think is...
Leaving damage in there makes it a complete sentence?
Yeah, that was going to be my concern. If we take out permanent damage, have we just changed context of the sentence? It just seems like that's, and based on the examples that the committee has given, conditions of small clear cut, visual impact, those, I mean, are they damaged? So I think permanent's really the word that I'm struggling with, too. But I really don't want to...
Yeah, I think that that would be the way to go.
I would agree, because I think if you look at the argument that there's, they're proposing that there is damage, that's in the record.
Right.
But permanent damage isn't.
Right. Okay, so then just deleting the word "permanent" from that sentence, calling permanent being part new evidence, the rest is being demonstrated someplace in, other places in the record, and...
So we have a motion...
I will second that motion if that was actually a motion.
Let me just clarify. So, motion to strike the word "permanent" from the first sentence under Sub Issue 2, environmental quality of Appeal Issue Number 28 in the Joint Response Committee's appeal statement.
Correct.
So, and that sort of a motion?
I made it, is there a second?
A second.
And then all in favor? Thank you. Four to nothing.
Okay.
Okay. Next is the challenge to a 12-page letter from Gunnar Schleter, Ph.D.
So there are sort of three issues associated with the letter from Gunnar Schleter that was attached to the applicant's, or I'm sorry, the neighbor's, appeal statement. As I read the motion to strike, the applicant is asking the Planning Commission to reject the entire letter, but then goes on to point out sort of specific sections of the letter that the applicant has issues with. So again, it's up to the Commission to decide whether you believe the letter in its entirety consists, or of new evidence or new appeal issues, or if there are portions of the letter that you believe are new evidence or new appeal issues, or if none of the letter consists of those things. So the first kind of sub-issue that the applicant identifies is that the Schleter memo includes a new collateral attack on the acknowledgement of Goal 5 products in the Metro Plan, or I'm sorry, Goal 5 program in the Metro Plan, for scenic sites, and points to Page 1 of the letter. And the specific statement that there is no indication that the city undertook any of the requirements from LCDC to address how development of the sites included in the working paper could occur while at the same time preserving their natural scenic values. In this context, it appears that the provisions of EC 9.6710 may yet be applicable, otherwise there is no evidence on how to implement EC 9.8320 sub-6. I believe that the applicant is arguing that this is a new issue that was not raised before the hearings official. The neighbors do include a pretty lengthy response, but it appears to be focused on the fact that they are arguing it's not new evidence. So Planning Commission is now in the position of deciding whether that particular statement is either a new appeal issue or new evidence, or neither.
You know, I read this one a couple times. It was, it's interesting. I almost, I went through, and really my notes are that it's really creating a new appeal issue. I mean, that's when I first went through it. So I'd love to hear a little bit more discussion from Planning Commission.
Well, for me, this one was tough, because I hate to, I hate to exclude all 12 pages because of one signal, one or two single points, so that's...
I like the way you've broken it out. That's why actually it's a better way to look at it.
When I think, I mean, I want to be clear, I think Planning Commission has options. I think that you could reject the entire letter. I think you could reject portions of the letter. I think you could reject portions of the letter, or you could reject none of the letter. So maybe the first question is, or the last question, I'm not sure which, it makes more sense, is, do you reject the entire letter? Or do you want to focus on the specific issues within the letter that have been raised by the applicant?
I'd be inclined to address the specific issues rather than the entire letter.
Okay. And I think that that's appropriate. So this first specifics would be the one that you just cited on the top of Page 13 of my packet. And Commissioner Taylor, you feel that that may be outside of an appeal issue that's already, that has been raised?
I did not, in going back through the record, I just didn't see specificity in terms of how it's presented in that way. I guess, you know, there's just a lot of material, so there's this hesitation that if staff could provide some feedback, because I was very particular about language, and once again, maybe I'm looking at this too closely.
For me, I know that, again, I'd have to dig into where it's at, but I know that the white paper comes up in some of the talk about the, about the South Hill studies. And so that is part of several different appeals. Whether this is the only place that the white paper is referenced--
The working paper.
The, the working paper. I don't know that, because, to be honest with you, I didn't dig through the 5,000 pages to try and find exactly where it was referenced, other than in, in this letter.
And it's not necessarily the working paper, it's really that there's no indication the city undertook any of the requirements from LCDC to address how development of sites included and where it could occur while at the same time preserving. I think it's just that, some additional analysis. It was like, I'm not sure, in fact, there's a part of it that I was like, well, is it relevant? But then, I, it was, so when I got into that kind of tract of thinking, and then I couldn't find evidence, then I realized, maybe this is new evidence. So that's where I kind of went with it. It was a rabbit trail that created a question.
So understanding that, at least for right now, the commission is not looking at rejecting the entire letter, I think we are focused on that, that one particular statement, that there's no indication that the city undertook any of the requirements from LCDC to address how development of the sites included in the working paper could occur, et cetera. So the planning commission, if you decided to reject that, I guess it's a couple of sentences, that would just mean that you would not consider those sentences in the letter as part of your overall consideration of the appeal issues. It doesn't mean, unless you made a subsequent decision, that the letter would go away, or that the appeal issue related to this statement would go away. At this point, we're just talking about whether or not you want to reject this particular statement from Dr. Schleter.
So one thing I did want to bring up, thank you for the clarification, Lauren, is this 12-page letter is packed full of information. So in going through it, because of the amount of information in the record, I found, you know, trying to make sure, word for word, so I don't know how that works with a process like this. Are, am I, are we dissecting it? I mean, this is, some of these items are, quite frankly, they're a little daunting with the amount of evidence. So to figure out, so I, I like that we keep going back to the definition, but this particular one, just because it, it does have specific information that's relevant to appeal items, and it's got evidence. I guess that's a question I wanted to bring up to you. Just by piecemealing parts, I, I mean, I guess that's our job. I mean, that's what we have to do. We have to go through, which is what I started to do, and then realized, am I catching everything?
Sure.
So sorry, this is my thought process, but I just need some assistance.
The, the planning commission, I believe, is in, this is not an easy, nothing to do with that, this application is going to be an easy decision, in part because this is a voluminous record.
Yeah.
It's over 5,000 pages, Nick?
Yeah.
And so there, I mean, that is a lot of information to keep track of and track through. To some extent, it is very helpful to the planning commission when the parties can do what the applicant and neighbors have done here, and point out--
Yeah.
--areas where they believe issues exist, and then respond to those critiques, because that can help focus your review, when the record is so large. To the extent that planning commissioners, on your own, identify appeal issues that you don't believe were raised before the hearings official, or new evidence that you don't see in the record before the hearings official, you certainly can, and I think you should, reject those things. You know, and if you, I, I think there is some, there's certainly an obligation to try to familiarize yourself with the record, and to be thoughtful about your decision-making, but this is a big record, and so to be able to, you know, compare every submission with this 5,000-page record, I don't think is feasible, especially in the time that you have to make your decision. So I don't know if that helps you, but I would--
Well, it confirms that I'm doing it right. So can I ask you a follow-up question? So because of the way, so can we understand, I know you, you've already stated this, but maybe planning commissioners, is that I, I do like the way both the applicant and the appellant have outlined it. So if we just stay consistent with Bill Close's kind of identification of the few particular items within the memo, I'm willing, I'm not sure if that is what he intended, like focus on these areas, or strike the whole thing. I'm willing to just follow that guidance, and then obviously, we're looking closely at these, like we just did this first item.
I guess my, my question is, is the hearings official did not have any opportunity to see this letter, or what's in this? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Okay. When you do an appeal, what I'm hearing is, is you can't do a rebuttal with new evidence, you have to do a rebuttal with what was presented to the hearings official?
That's right.
Okay.
Arguments on appeal need to be based on evidence that was presented to the hearings official.
So then, if none of this was to the hearings official, how can we even accept any part of the 12-page letter? That's what I don't understand, and that's why I'm asking that question.
Well, the thing that is most helpful to the planning commission, and that I believe was done to some extent in the letter, and certainly in other submissions, is if the person making the argument refers back to the specific place in the record that they're drawing evidence from, because then you can be pretty confident that the evidence was in the record. And also, if they refer back to, you know, their submissions to the hearings official, or the hearings official's decision to show that the appeal issue that they're raising was also raised before the hearings official. So that, that doesn't always happen, but that is the thing that is most helpful to the planning commission. When you don't have that--
So when they appeal, they can only make the same objections, pretty much, that they made to the hearings official? If, if in fact, there was a reference in the initial thing to the hearings official concerning that Goal V was met because of blah, 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 you're saying that if they didn't say it then, they can't say it now, that that's not accurate?
Generally, yes. So the way that our appeal system works is that it is intended to act as a funnel, right? You're supposed to make as many arguments early on as possible, and then think evidence and argument and issues kind of funnel down as you get to higher and higher levels of appeal. So the way that it's supposed to work is, you know, I raise an issue before the hearings official, I would say, I don't think this criterion is met, maybe she disagrees with me and says, I do think it's met. Then I can appeal her decision and say, I think she got it wrong. Look at this, you know, these pieces of evidence in the record to show that I'm right and she got it wrong. But I shouldn't be saying, oh, and I, I discovered this whole new appeal issue over here that I never talked to the hearings official about, but now I want to bring it to you, planning commission. That is not allowed, under our code.
So it's up to the applicant to screen new evidence, that the city did not say this was new evidence? This is, sometimes at a meeting, you'll say, we'll let you know if things handed in, or new evidence. It was never said by the city that this was new evidence.
It's not entirely up to the applicant, but it certainly is helpful when the parties do that. If, you know, if staff identifies something that staff believes is new evidence, we will bring that to you as well. In this case, I don't know that staff did extra analysis--
Okay.
--because the applicant had already done the analysis.
All right, that answers my question.
Is that accurate?
So can I ask one additional follow-up question? Because I just don't want to make the assumption, so the way that Bill Close has identified this, so at first, it sounds like he's saying, basically, challenging all 12 pages, but then going into these individual items. Does any, do we have any insight as to what that means? So is, does that mean, yes, all 12, but these are the only three? Or really, of the 12, these are my three? Did it, I guess I would just love, because I'm concerned about the 12 pages, actually. There's enough, there's enough possibility for potential new evidence without, that's why I appreciate the overview of the three most significant items, but there's a lot of, this is a dense 12-page document that--
Okay. So what you have before you is the motion to strike, the record is closed to both evidence and argument at this point.
Yeah. So this is it? This is what we've got?
Yeah.
That's right.
It is ultimately up to the planning commission, then, to look at that letter and say, I feel that the entire letter is new evidence or new appeal issues, so it should all be rejected, or I, I wouldn't reject the entire letter, but there are portions of it that cause me concern, and I feel should be rejected.
Okay, Harry, you've been clear. I'm just trying to spin it a different way again. Okay.
Right. So I guess, on this first one, where it talks about Page 20 of the staff report and the Goal V inventory, is the, I mean, focusing in on that issue, is the issue then whether or not, because it sounds like the staff report included the subject property in the Goal V inventory per the scenic sites working paper, but then the issue is, is that really the definitive way to get it into the Goal V inventory? And so then I guess my question is, if that was in the staff report, and this is addressing that, is it then really just argument rather than new evidence? And that's, that's what I'm questioning and wondering about.
From staff's perspective, I think you're, you're on the right track, you know, that it appears to be a new issue or new argument, not necessarily new evidence.
Yeah.
There is discussion in the record, and it's an important factual determination about whether or not the site is included on the scenic sites map, which is adopted. I don't think that there's, you know, an argument that, that it, that it's not adopted, but the process that the city undertook, and whether it was adequate in terms of the original adoption, is what's being raised here.
Yeah. It's new, to me, I mean, this one's pretty straightforward. Where I'm concerned, I'm considering the whole 12 pages, and that's where, but definitely this one, I'm in agreement with you.
Taken as a specific--
Yeah.
--piece related to what's in the letter, it appears to be a new issue for staff.
Yeah, without a doubt. I mean, that's my--
So would you, Commissioner Taylor, then move to reject that specific paragraph?
Sure.
Because rather than making the argument whether or not it's in the Goal V inventory, it really addresses or attacks the way it got in the first place.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I read it.
Which is--
Which is what Mr. Close is arguing, is that it's a collateral attack on the city's adoption.
Right. So if you, if you're not happy with this, go back to how it got there. Okay. I'd be inclined to agree that it's new evidence.
So I make a motion that--
For the plant? Motion to, planning commission, reject the--
Paragraph.
Second and third sentences of the first paragraph of the May 2, 2018, letter from Gunnar, oh, I'm sorry, it's not the first paragraph, the second paragraph, of the May 2, 2018, letter from Gunnar Schleter, attached to the Joint Neighborhood Response Committee's appeal statement. That begins, there's no indication that the city undertook any of the requirements.
Yep. I, I don't have to repeat that, do I? Great. I may make some of it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Those in favor? Sure. Okay. So what's the next section of this that we have to?
So the next piece is, the issue, as framed by the applicant, is that the Schleter memo undertakes a new evidentiary critique of the applicant's geotechnical slash geologic investigation with respect to slope stability, parentheses, see Pages 8 through 9, and soil creep, parentheses, see Pages 9 through 10. See especially, paragraph four on Page 10, which is chock full of new evidence about soil creep, as evidenced by moving mailboxes and pavement deflection. And then, Dr. Schleter provided a response that indicates that this is not a new appeal issue, that this idea was first brought up in the applicant's rebuttal period, so this is something that the hearings official did have the ability to consider. And so I think, again, sort of here, the question for the planning commission is, the applicant has identified Pages 8 through 9, Pages 9 through 10, and then specifically paragraph four on Page 10. So theoretically, planning commission could reject Pages 8 through 10, or some subset of those, or only paragraph four on Page 10, which seems to be the most objectionable And this appears to be a new evidence issue.
No, please do.
I finally got this to load, so now I just have to find the page. But, so I, I agree with the applicant. I, I think that there, there is, in the record, I think that essentially, the new evidence actually goes beyond what it did in the information in the record. But in terms of the scope, Lauren's question, that's where I, like I said, I'm going to have to reference it, but that's my start for the discussion.
So Commissioner Taylor, just to make sure I'm understanding you, are you, are you of the opinion that this is not a new appeal issue, but there may be new evidence in the letter? Is that accurate?
That's right, because--
So can I make a brief phrase?
Yes, please.
What you said, to make sure that I'm understanding what you're saying, is that the appeal issue was brought up originally regarding the soil creep and mailboxes moving and that, but the additional photos and, I'll say, commentary on that--
Yeah, the analysis.
--is more, is more new evidence than argument for that original appeal issue?
Yeah. I mean, in some ways, I, I feel bad, because I've got this document that, unfortunately, I'm half electronic and half not, that that's, that's my memory based on my notes. Yeah. I don't know, yours is working, mine's not. So, okay. Yes.
So Commissioner Taylor--
Yeah.
--you don't have the, the letter in front of you?
No, I don't.
Are there, so maybe this is not--
Maybe let's sidetrack the discussion, and I'll see if I can get it up to someone else.
Is this something where the photos are the issue, and not necessarily the statements? I mean, if the statements were in the record, it's only the photos that are new, because they weren't in the record? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'm not sure if there are photos. Are there photos attached to the letter? Are there photos attached to the letter?
Not that I saw, but I thought there was reference to photos.
See attached photos demonstrating the offset, page 15, or...
And I think that might have, would that have been in his presentation in the PowerPoint that night at the public hearing?
The reference, yes.
That was the board, the PowerPoint?
That was at the very end of the presentation.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. That's the rebuttal from the neighbors.
Yeah.
They're saying the photos were already in the record and constitute...
In the, presented at the public hearing that we had.
Okay.
Yes.
And I don't know if that was the same PowerPoint that may have been presented to the hearings official.
My understanding was, was the PowerPoint that was loaded at our public hearing was the same PowerPoint that was loaded for the hearings official.
I don't know how to verify that. I'd have to compare them.
Did you have a conversation with...
We did.
The appellant about that?
It seemed to me that when we talked about this in the pre-meeting, that was one of the conditions, that was if you were going to do a PowerPoint, it had to be the same one. So I took it through.
Again, I never compared them, so I couldn't.
It should be the same one.
Should be.
Yes.
I mean, that's actually where, and I am kind of careful like that, is that's where I'm going with this, is that branch engineering actually addresses some of these things, so does Gunnar Pryor testimony. It's just the actual comparing document to document and comparing evidence to evidence. And that was what I was being challenged by, so that's why...
So I would just point out to the commission that at this point, the applicant's motion to strike, as I read it, does not challenge the PowerPoint presentation. If the commission feels like the PowerPoint presentation itself is new evidence, you could certainly reject that and not consider it. But the reference to what we believe is the PowerPoint presentation is actually in Dr. Schleter's response to the applicant's issues related to Dr. Schleter's letter. So we've got a couple of issues floating around here.
I guess what I'm struggling with is, does the response here constitute new evidence, or is it just an expansion of the argument that has been made about the soil creep and the two to three feet and that, which appears to be in the original open record? I'm just looking in, where it talks about the March 21st, first open record period.
And Nick's looking for that record.
Yeah. And that the road appears to have been offset at least two to three feet in an easterly direction. And, and I guess those sorts of things combined with what's in here, this seems to add verbiage to that, but I'm not sure it really, I guess I'm struggling, does that really constitute new evidence, or is it just an expansion of the argument?
And that is, that's the question.
And that's our question.
That's the question.
I mean, when I, I'm not as familiar with the record as staff or planning commissioner, but when I read the motion to strike, it seemed to me that, although a number of pages are mentioned, paragraph four on page 10 seemed to be particularly problematic for the applicant. And when I looked at that paragraph, portions of it, you know, there are footnotes referring back to prior submissions to the record, but there's, there are a couple of sentences that say, at the location of the northern two mailboxes in this section, the actual pavement is a couple of feet west of the area with maximum eastward pavement deflection, which is located about 120 feet north of the mailbox. Similarly, the southern of the two mailboxes is located approximately 30 feet north of the area of maximum deflection. I, I'm not sure if those specific, you know, feet measurements are already included in the record, and if, if not, then going back to the definition of evidence, would that constitute facts, data, or other information offered for applicable approval criteria? So, you know, the Planning Commission doesn't need to focus that narrowly, but that seemed to be perhaps the area of most concern to the applicant. I don't know.
Yeah, I could not find any of the dimensions at that level of specificity. And there was another area I couldn't also, so...
And I think where I struggle is, in, if we were to, let's say, reject that as new evidence, do we then still have enough, what I would call equivalent information from the original testimony to make a valid decision on that issue without this additional information?
Well, I think, and it's a good question.
And I think, I think we do, you know, as far as what's in the record and what's already been presented to address that issue, I think there may be all ready enough information to address that one way or the other, without the additional 120 feet, et cetera. So I don't know where that puts us, but...
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's clearly, or at least from what I can find in the record, it seems like new evidence to me, and I go, keep going back to the appeal to, to see, is it really relevant to the decision, whether it's X amount of feet from the mailboxes, et cetera? I mean, that's where...
It's almost like it was permanent, like addressed earlier.
So, yeah, I mean, it is new evidence. I mean, it's new information, new details.
So Commissioner Taylor, would you then move to strike just those two sentences that I just read aloud?
Yeah, that you read, yeah. That's my memory.
So would you like a motion?
Yeah, please.
Move to strike the two sentences beginning with, at the location of the northern of the two mailboxes, and ending with the southern of the two lobes crossed by the road, located on page 10 of the May 2, 2018, letter submitted by Gunnar Schleter and attached to the Joint Response Committee's appeal statement.
Okay. All in favor?
Okay.
Or discussion, I'm sorry. I'll do discussion first.
I see where on page 10, paragraph four, at the location begins, and where does it end? By the road? Is that what you're saying? Before and...
The two lobes crossed by the road.
Just right before that last thing. We're leaving in the last sentence.
Yes, okay, that's what I said.
So the in addition dimension about...
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Then the last sort of sub-issue is, the applicant asserts that the Schleter memo offers new evidence evaluating the applicant's geotechnical slash geologic investigation on page 11 of the Schleter letter. The evidence in the record, quote, "The evidence in the record indicates that the applicant's consultants conducted a half-hearted study of the site designed to find as few problems as possible," end quote. So the applicant is alleging that that sentence about the half-hearted study is new evidence. And Dr. Schleter responds that, for reasons already articulated in the record, he believes that statement is accurate. So since this is an evidentiary challenge, again, we would go back to the definition of evidence, is a, is that, does that sentence constitute facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance with an applicable approval criterion?
I, I think it does. I would, I would strike it as new evidence. I think it's an opinion from a professional. I don't see the direct language, you know, once again, I mean, you can construe it, maybe, but, and that's where I'm more conservative. It's like, yeah, this is a professional licensed individual, and, yeah, so that's my opinion.
And for me, again, the striking an opinion isn't striking the evidence that's in the record that, that that opinion may be based upon, and so I don't have a problem with striking that from the record.
Okay with that?
And does it demonstrate compliance or non-compliance? And that's where I go to, well, really, there's an assessment in the record that's provided by both the applicant and the appellant. This is an opinion, but once again, I go to, it's an opinion from a professional. So can we just strike it? Just because, I mean, do we have to have, I just think it offers the potential for complications. I mean, it is an opinion by a professional, but it isn't directly...
I mean, if you, as the Planning Commission, believe that this statement constitutes new evidence, then yes, you can reject it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just to getting to that point, from my previous discussions that we had when we were trying to lay out this meeting, as we get into the appeals issue, one of the appeals issue is going to be, you know, how do, how do we judge competing technical data from different expertises? So we'll get into that later and have some sort of discussion on how to weigh those two competing forms of evidence, so...
I'm exactly with what you're saying, but from what I asked, the question of legal, it is, if that wasn't presented to the hearings official, then it's new evidence. So it's not a different opinion, it's something that's new because it wasn't presented at the time of the hearing official.
I think that's what your fellow commissioners are saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was saying. Where I go to, the earlier discussion about how we addressed it in terms of, does it really address the criteria? And that's where I'm like, there's a lot of factual information that might support that statement, potentially, but it's a subjective opinion. So I agree, I agree with you, but that's why I brought it up in context of...
Well, it's also making an assumption of what the other engineer...
Right.
Intent was, that they're not, they don't know.
I think we're pretty clear on this. Is there a, a motion?
So move to strike the first sentence of the conclusion, under the heading conclusion, in the May 2, 2018, letter from Gunnar Schleter, attached to the Joint Response Committee's appeal statement.
Yes.
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 Are you moving that? I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Four.
So two more probably quick issues, and then we can move on to the meat of the appeal. So as we discussed previously, under this last evidentiary challenge, there was a challenge to the entire letter, and my feeling from the discussion is that the commission is not looking towards striking the entire letter, but I haven't heard definitively on that yet.
Okay.
And the other piece of it is that the applicant said the letter should be stricken in addition to the issues in the appeal statement that rely on the letter. So the applicant would like the Planning Commission to reject both the entire letter itself and appeal issues that rely on the letter, and my review of the appeal issues indicate that that would be appeal issues five and 20. If the commission does not strike the entire letter, I don't think you need to reach the question of whether the appeal issues also would need to be stricken. If you do strike the entire letter, then you might think about whether, without the letter, there's still support for those appeal issues. And that applicant did not go into much detail about why, or any detail really, about why the, the applicant believes the appeal issue should also be stricken. But I wanted to draw your attention to that because it is something that the applicant brought up. So maybe the first question is, just to decide whether the commission wants to strike the entire letter, and if the answer is no, then I think that can be the end of the discussion.
I'll, I'll start. I think I'm not in favor of striking the entire letter. However, regarding appeal issues five and 20, my leaning on those really has nothing to do with the letter. And so for me, it's kind of a moot point, because I think there's some other issues that are kind of getting ahead of us now, that I'll be bringing up on appeal issues five and 20, that will, will affect my decision, that are really unrelated to the letter.
I feel similarly. I feel the letter should be kept, it wasn't challenged by individual sections except blanket statement. And I think when we look at appeal issues five and 20, we'll make our own determination what really applies to them.
Yeah, I think I concur with my fellow commissioners. I think that unless it was a specific point that was brought up and we, we dealt with those, the more information we have to make our decision that was in the record that hasn't been challenged is, is fine by me. So I think I'm fine with not moving to strike the whole letter.
Okay.
Do we need a motion for that, or not?
You're not going to reject any of them.
No. Or Commissioner Taylor? All right, so then it looks like it's four to one to leave the rest of the letter in. Okay.
Okay. That is it for the procedural issue.
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question. On what Mr. Close indicated, he also had appeal issue eight, page 11, they're not in the previous design. That wasn't discussed, why?
Can you point me to the page that you're looking at?
Page six of our AIF. And he writes, appeal issue eight, page 11, first paragraph. You know, you do the appeal introduction, page one, part four, and then the next thing is appeal issue eight, page 11, which we didn't talk about. I'm just wondering, is there a reason?
Oh, that's, yeah...
So in this, staff response provided for the various appeal issues, we, we looked at that question as well and agreed, those previous designs are not in the record, and so...
They're not in the record.
No, but I just want to have it mentioned when we're doing this, rather than if we're going to do that separately.
The extent that they're not in the record, there's nothing to reject, is, I guess, what I would suggest.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready to move on? Legal, you okay with where we're at on the motions to strike?
I am, thank you.
Commissioner, are you okay with moving on after the motions to strike? Okay, so then, the, the way that I see this is, the first two that we need to deal with are the applicant's two appeal issues, one being the clear and objective standards, and then the second being the applicability of the South Hills study. Staff, do we want to talk about that at all, or...
I can talk.
Yeah.
I can talk to you some more.
Thank you.
I apologize for the amount of...
No, no, it's very...
Information you've been hearing from me today. So just to kind of take a quick step back and talk about Planning Commission's review of appeal issues generally. So for most of the issues associated with these two appeals, the question for the Planning Commission will be, is there sufficient evidence in the whole record to allow a reasonable decision-maker to conclude that the approval criterion was met? Right. However, in the applicant's two appeal issues, they're really more legal questions than questions of fact. So you're not combing through the record to look for evidence related to those issues. The question is whether, you know, the applicant was entitled to only clear and objective standards, and whether the South Hills study applies to the subject property. If you agree with the applicant, that, so let me back up again. So the hearings official determined that the applicant was not entitled to solely clear and objective standards, and determined that the South Hills study did apply to the subject property. So the applicant is challenging those decisions by the hearings official. If you agree with the applicant, then a bunch of approval criteria and a bunch of appeal issues will fall away, which is in part why it makes some sense to address those applicant's appeal issues first. So you now are looking at whether the hearings official erred in her legal analysis. And if you, you could determine that you think that she did, but if you don't feel that you can say that the hearings official clearly erred, then you should affirm. The applicant has raised these issues on appeal to you, they've preserved them so they can raise those issues on appeal to Luba, and Luba could make a final determination about whether the clear and objectives, standards, only clear and objective standards are applicable to the application, and/or whether the South Hills study is applicable to the subject property. So the, let's see. And in terms of, you know, the arguments on both sides, I would just refer you back to the hearings official's decision. I think she did a good job of articulating both... I think she did a good job of articulating both the applicant's arguments and the city's responses to those arguments on both of those issues. And if you feel like you want a little bit more background, I can certainly give you that as well. So.
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to kind of flip this a little bit, just because for me, the second one was a little bit clearer for me from the hearings official's decision, and I'm hopeful it might be more clear that whether the South Hills study applies or not. I mean, I may be wrong, but why don't we, why don't we do that one first, if that's okay with, with Planning Commission? Because for me, that one seemed, I was, didn't have too much of a problem.
Do our opinions on what we think on that?
Yes, please.
I think Mr. Borowski had his hand up first.
Well, since you wanted to do that one first.
Yep.
I agree that the hearings official did not err on the application of the South Hills study, I vote in that way. And I also think so similarly on the clear and objective standards. They don't apply.
I'll, I'll just go with the South Hills study. I think, I think it does apply. I think when properties are annexed, I think there's kind of this, it may not be specifically written into that, but I think it, I think you can make a good case that it applies. So I would be inclined to reject that argument.
I think that the description, the hearings official goes into the description of how it's determined if it's included in the study is what's in the code, so affirm or in the plan. So I affirm the hearings official's decision.
And for me, again, I, I'm kind of following my other commissioners here. I believe that both of these issues could be delved into much deeper at a, at a higher appeal level and, than us, and people that know a lot more about it than us. So I'm, I'm inclined to affirm the hearings official's decision on the South Hills study. Okay? So I'm going to make, this one, again, at this point, I'm going to do kind of straw polls on us, one because Commissioner Baker's not here as well, and since it's not an evidentiary hearing where we have to have the thing. So at this point, on the South Hills studies, I would move that the hearings official did not err, or not move, but get the straw poll. Is there, okay, so.
Affirming the...
Affirming it. So we've got four to zero on that one. Okay, now we can talk about the clear and objective standards one. Commissioner?
I'll, I'll jump in. I think the applicant makes a very compelling argument on this one.
Yeah.
And looking at the ORS standards, and specifically in sub six, where it says, "in addition to," an approved, an approval process for needed housing. The "in addition to," in looking at that whole context of the ORS, I think the applicant made a compelling argument that there really isn't any way to get there on this particular property, and so there isn't a path that the city has allowed under needed housing. And so this can't apply as the discretionary because there isn't also a needed housing tract, because effectively, there isn't any way to get there. And I think that's a pretty compelling argument.
I disagree. I feel that there's just going to be some lands and some codes that say you can't do it, and just to say you can't do it doesn't mean you do it a different way. This applicant chose to go the other, other approach because it couldn't be done, that approach, and it couldn't be done, that approach, because that's what the code says, whether it's needed housing or not needed housing. So I feel the hearings official did not err on this.
Commissioner Taylor?
I actually spent a lot of time on this one, and where, for the same reason that Commissioner Randall did, and I found it very compelling, I also think it's, it's definitely a large, larger question as we move forward, but as we stay focused on this, I'm going to base on the hearings official's discussion about an option. So there is an option, there are two tracks, so based on her argument, I'm going to affirm our decision.
And for me, again, I concede the compelling argument, but I don't feel comfortable enough to overturn the hearings official's decision at this time. I feel that, that this may be something that can go on appeal further than me, but I, I will land with the hearings official did not err. So at this point, we've got a straw poll. It seemed to me it was three to one.
Three to one.
Again, and we will...
I would, I would...
We will re...
Post that the hearings official erred on this one.
Okay. Okay, so that gets us past the hearings official, or past the appellants to... So next, we are at, like, quite five after. We have another 20 minutes to work on the third, the start of the 31 from the Joint Response Committee. So I guess we start with number one.
Seems like one, two, and three were kind of related.
Well, so one, two, and three relate to applicable plans, adopted plans.
Right.
Issue ones about metro plan policies, two and three are about South Hills study.
Okay. Okay, so we're just going to go through them one at a time. So the first one is the applicability of the policies of the metro plan. I'm open to discussion.
So I thought it was interesting. I actually found an error by the hearings official. It's not an error in her decision, because I actually, in going over this, I'm going to affirm the hearings official decision, or at least that's my opinion. But she did err on page 21 of her decision, the 21 of the AIS and 14 of the actual decision. She actually said that planning staff have identified the three following policies within the metro plan residential land use and housing as approval criteria, which basically makes the assumption, staff saying this is approval criteria for specific development. But staff didn't actually say that. So if you look at page seven on the first paragraph in the staff report, they didn't actually say that. They didn't say that it was approval criteria. So once again, I've got at least better notes in some areas. I can't pull up the documents. So if you look at the staff report, you'll see the language directly says, it doesn't say it's approval criteria, but even without that, the hearings official doesn't get stuck on that. But I just want to note that I think she's inaccurately representing staff. But is that relevant? I, once again, I would affirm that, that this criteria is actually the metro plan policies as staff correctly identifies, and the hearings official, that it's not specific to development.
I appreciate that you point that out. Oftentimes, the way that the policies are characterized in the context of, well, an approval or as approval criteria, whether they're mandatory or not, can be a key question or issue. And so what I'm hearing you say is, you'd be inclined to affirm, but that we might, I mean, if there's a majority of the commission that would want to reword this...
Yeah.
To some degree, that the hearings official's decision could be modified with, with some wording changes that better reflect what was...
Yeah, would better reflect what the staff...
In the staff report.
Yeah. Because it's, it's actually, by using that word, I understand why the appellant would grab those words, because it seems site-specific. But staff and the hearings official are very, I think, accurately depict what the metro plan's policies are.
I don't have the staff report in front of me, but when I look at this, I mean, I could see us potentially modifying it to just reference the, the three policies as being relevant to approval of the proposed PUD.
Yeah, you actually, on page seven, your first paragraph, actually, you stated well.
Okay.
So, so for me, the notes that I had are, you know, is our policies' approval criteria is kind of what it comes down to, their argument. Am I correct in that? Or our policies, things, are metro plan policies' approval criteria, or are metro plan policies' guiding principles for the, the city of Eugene to go forward? For me, I kind of agree with the hearings official that they are directives to, to the city, not approval criteria. That's kind of how I saw this issue.
I don't think the hearings official erred on this.
Okay. Okay, so we'll take a straw poll, and it looks like it's four to one, and with a, with a footnote, or how?
Clarification.
Four to zero.
We might want to make a clarification.
Four to zero, yeah.
Right. So we, we can take that as, I mean, see head nods, as direction for purposes of a future final order, and present that, that wording as part of the final order?
Yeah. I mean, I would. Good, yeah.
Okay. Four to zero on that one. Number two, hearings official erred by incorrectly interpreting the requirements of the South Hills study Ridgeline Park section. I've got so many papers up there, it's crazy.
Commissioner Borowski, I would say, for purposes of your consideration, in the packet, staff have sort of consolidated for you appeal issues...
Right.
Two and three, because they both relate to the Ridgeline Park section of the South Hills study.
Right.
And so Planning Commission could certainly take them one by one and discuss them separately, but to the extent that the commissioners feel like there's overlap or, you know, similar reasoning for those two appeal issues, you could take them together if you so chose.
Okay. I would entertain discussion on these appeal issues.
Okay, so I don't need to start again.
You, you do such a good job of it.
No, I don't know, I feel like, yeah, I've got technical. I'm going to, I'm going to stay litite in the future, I'm only copying papers. Anyways, hearings official, I think, so I'm going to stick with two and three, I'll say that overall, I'm affirming the hearings official decision. I did, once again, note a couple of interests. One is an error, two is, it's in, it's on page 23 of the AIS of the hearings official's decision, or 16 of the hearings official's decision. It's interesting, so what I noticed is that she, she's got, she's quoting in italics under South Hills studies that all vacant property, she's copying that section of South Hills studies. The section, the end sentence is actually not adopted within chapter nine, which I thought was interesting, that particular sentence, that the area specified preservation be protected through a variety of techniques, including but not limiting to acquisition, scenic easement, density transfers, and dedication. So the reason why I thought that was, anyways, maybe I shouldn't bring this up, it's my rabbit trail. So really, I affirm it because, and then I'll go back to that piece, so it will make more sense, affirm it because it's designated for residential development, it's not preservation for park usage, but obviously, if there's property above the elevation of 901 feet, you have to follow, you have to go through, it's subject to one and two. So obviously, two, the applicant is following through, which is the planned unit development. And then if that last sentence is actually included, I just had a question first, really is it, but it's in her decision, is that there's an interesting connection in terms of preservation? If it actually falling under whatever's developed at by, above 901 feet, that has to go through this planned unit development, the area specified for preservation within that, within any area above 901 feet. So I just want to make sure, am I making a connection that's not there?
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
So you made reference to that latter part of the italicized...
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Which is coming from the actual plan.
Right. It's coming from the actual plan, I think, whether it's codified in chapter nine or not is irrelevant.
Okay.
As a type three application, you can consider the full text of the plan, so it's not limited by the fact that that may not be...
Okay.
Codified. But I guess the question to the commission would be, was she an error by relying on that or including that? And so I look back to you to say, is that, is that an error, you believe? I mean, are you suggesting that that provision from a plan should be stricken from her decision? I mean, to some extent, I, I believe she relies on that for context in understanding what, what's allowed above 901 feet in elevation, and what, what constitutes a site that's, should be designated for preservation versus residential development.
Right, right. So really, where my question is, is more about interpretation, which I guess I have to figure out. So where I ended up is that there isn't any area above 901 that's being actually allocated for preservation, and because it's specific to anything above the 901, the preservation areas are below the 901. So once again, I'm just looking at, like, am I even interpreting this correctly? But she doesn't, she doesn't look at it the way I do, and the, I'll bring the relevance here, is, one of the things that I've noticed, and this is a bigger picture item, that actually is more applicable to the entire application, and it's a question. So my understanding is that the tentative PUD, obviously, it's through the decision, the applicant's presented the application, there are no houses, there are no specific developments proposed for each of the lots. I understand that. Okay, that's tentative. It sounds like in the evidence, which I've got quoted here later on, that's specific to, specific appeal items, is that the, the final PUD, the intention of the applicant is actually to submit a final PUD without not including the specific development on each lot. So the hierarchy, you know, that's going to happen, and there'll, there'll be a subdivision without the specific housing as well. So there's a concern by neighbors that are actually riddled through most all of these appeals, and that they're, that by the time, there, there is public process in a final PUD, right? You know, it's type one subdivision, the tentative's a, it's a type two, the final's a type two, thank you, sorry. Finals, I have it down. The final's a type two, the subdivision tentative's a type two, the final subdivision's a type one, but all those things are occurring without specific homes being presented on each of the development sites. And where I go with that is I look at the South Hills study, and I, I look at, so this is really a point of discussion of the, of the, the criteria or the policies when, within the South Hills studies. Now, it's forcing an elevation, anything above 901 feet, it's forcing a planned unit development. So I guess my question to you is, staff, do you look at planned unit developments? Is this a normal procedure to not have specific development on each of the lots, go through an entire series of application that has public process without seeing the actual homes? Because I, some other PUDs have actual buildings for the final, for instance, we can use Crescent Village, had a tentative, it had a lot of development, then we each lot or area phase was developed, the actual building was part of the final. So I just want to understand, is this kind of normal? Is it procedurally accurate?
Yeah, I think it is common practice, and it's, we could point to a number of projects, you know, South Hills PUDs that do not include specific house plans. I think the more important question for the commission is whether, based on the criteria and the policies in the South Hills study...
Are you allowed to?
If you feel that that level of detail and evidence would be necessary in order to show compliance, I think that's really the key question. And perhaps even, there's a difference between... And perhaps even, there's a difference between above 901 feet and below. But ultimately, it's a question of what the decision maker believes is adequate evidence in the form of, for example, house plans, like specific footprints, or more detail as asserted by the neighborhood appellant's as being necessary to show compliance.
Okay. So that's where I went with it. So thanks for that description. So I don't see anything in the record. It sounds like there isn't history that wouldn't prohibit, or that prohibits them from not providing the actual development in each of the lots. Where my concern lies, not necessarily with this one, but as we continue to talk about South Hill Studies, is that there are specific development standards, and we're not there yet, because we're still in the Ridgeline Park section. Specific development standards, is there a way we can take specifically bulk scale height? Granted, yes, I agree with the hearings official's argument. I just look at kind of the sensitivity of development standards that are specific in the South Hill Studies, and that the actual development isn't being proposed. So is there a way we can just throw that specific development standard, for instance, into a condition of approval? To allow for some of the public process that essentially the neighbors are saying, well, wait a minute, each of these sites, as individual sites are sensitive potentially. Now, overall, we can get into the details, because I think the hearings official actually didn't err on a lot of them. Does that make sense? This is a big picture.
It makes sense to me. It's a really key question as it relates to the development standards. We haven't reached that yet in this-
No, no.
Appeal issues, but I encourage the commission to be thinking about that as you look at each of those more specific, effectively, criteria or policies from the South Hill Study.
Yeah.
Whether it's about bulk and height, or blending with the natural characteristics of the area, maximum preservation of existing trees and other vegetation. In other words, do you have enough information based just on building envelopes, conditions related to tree preservation, preservation tracts and whatnot, to say that those policies and criteria are met, without the additional detail of specific house plans within those building envelopes? And based on R1 development standards that would be applicable otherwise? So the hearings official, you know, we're jumping ahead a little bit.
Yeah.
To answer your question, I think it's certainly possible that the commission could choose to find error and remedy that potentially with a condition of approval that required more information in terms of specific buildings on individual lots. I've not seen that in past examples, you know, as part of an appeal, but it's certainly possible if you think that that was, you know, a deficiency in the hearings official's decision. The other option would be, obviously, to reverse the decision for being incorrect with the, approving it without that additional information.
Okay.
We can, we'll get to those, I think, in more detail.
Yes, yes. Thanks for having that bigger discussion while we're on the South Hill Studies. So here's my specific for issue two and issue three. I affirm the decision by the hearings official. I agree with the arguments, her decision two and three. I did want to note that the, she did make a mistake, I think, and actually, the appellant identifies it, is that she talks about the AIS, page 29.
Which one, the first one?
The second, or the first one, her decision on the 20, on page 22. She calls it about the northeast boundary. I don't know if it's that needed, but obviously, the appellant caught it, I caught it. I was trying to figure out what exactly is she referring to. There's a north boundary, there's an east boundary, and basically, she's talking about the corner. So whether we want to clarify it or not, it's really the northeast corner that she's-
Can you help me identify more specifically the text in the hearings official's decision you're pointing to?
And which?
It's, sorry, page 29 of the AIS, or page 22 of her decision, fourth paragraph.
Page two, fourth.
She says, "The proposed development," the very last sentence, "the proposed development also includes a preservation area along the northeast boundary of the subject property, which abuses public open space of Hendrix Park." It's actually the north boundary. Anyways, it's just the layout. It's confusing. The appellant brought it up to, they said, what's the northeast boundary? So it's just anal. It's, it caused them some confusion.
I'm still trying to-
Sorry, page 22 of her decision. Sorry, it's under finding, the second paragraph under finding, the sentence right above the italicized code section.
Last sentence, paragraph two of the-
I don't think we have the right page number.
Page 22. Of the hearings official decision, the AIS, it was page 29.
Page 29 of the AIS, 22 of the hearings official.
Sorry, and that might be not something we want to bring up. I'm not sure it needs to be.
So it would be to strike the word east?
Yeah, northeast corner. I mean, there is no northeast boundary. I mean, there's a north and there's an east, but maybe, you know, I just, the appellant, it caused them confusion, too.
Can I point out where we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah. It's perfect. Because actually, I was trying to figure out what exactly-
So this is north, this is east, we're talking about this part of the boundary that butts Hendrix Park.
So isn't that just the north boundary?
So this is the north-
Well, in the northeast corner.
Corner, yeah. Anyways.
And it's the northern boundary from the northeast corner, I think.
Yeah, yeah. I figured it out. I mean, it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyways, but I affirm, my opinion is I affirm her decision.
Other commissioners?
Yeah, I think northeast corner might actually confuse it more, frankly.
Yeah. Anyways, you can leave it, too.
I'm okay with the northeast boundary after you, Nick, after you explained that. So, but I, it's just, on these two issues, though, on two and three-
Yeah.
I think I would affirm the hearings official on that, primarily because where she quotes in the italics on her decision, page 16, it specifically says that all vacant property above an elevation of 901 feet be preserved from an intensive level of development. And I think with that being in the code, it's not like it's preserving it from development entirely, that it gets set aside as parkland or anything like that, but it's from an intensive level of development, subject to the following exceptions, one of which is the PUD procedures. So I don't think she erred in that part of the decision.
Commissioner Jaworski?
I concur to it. The hearings official did not err. And in some developments that I've had, it's kind of interesting on these studies, because I was told policies are adopted, recommendations aren't by the city, and these are all recommendations. So it makes it kind of interesting. You can get the intent of what the South Hill Study wanted to do, but you don't get it adopted as a policy would be.
So if I may, just as a point of clarification, the adopting resolution for the South Hill Studies, although these are labeled in the study itself as recommendations, they're identified as applicable land use regulations. I mean, they're, I mean, I don't have the wording in front of it.
They were not adopted by the city council, because I was told that they only adopt the policies of various plans. That's what I was told. But if I can be corrected now, that'd be good.
Commissioner Jaworski, I think that's inaccurate. The city council adopts the resolution in this case, implementing the South Hill Study. And so the entire study was adopted as an attachment to the resolution that was adopted.
Even the recommendation?
Yes.
So they don't do that on refinement plans, then?
It, I think it depends on each refinement plan and the adopting resolution or ordinance, and it can come in all shapes and sizes or varieties, depending on the discretion of the council, how it's crafted.
Well, I feel the hearings official did not err. The word intensity of development is interesting. And secondly, they grant two exceptions of either single family and/or PUD, so this is an exception.
Okay, so checking the time, I'm going to ask if you're all okay with both two and three, as the hearings official did not err. And I agree with that as well. So those are both four, zero. Yeah?
Can I ask a clarifying question? So Commissioner Taylor had asked for a potential clarification of northeast boundary versus northeast corner, and Commissioner Randall said he thought perhaps it wouldn't be clarifying. I didn't, I didn't hear consensus from the commission on that clarification.
I think it's a fine, the way she worded it, that-
If you want to move to-
Do you guys have any strong thoughts? I mean, I figured it out. It is, the appellant brought it up. I was like, where exactly is it? Nick was able to show us. I think if we can provide a clarification, so there's no confusion, if that makes sense, I think let's do it.
I mean, the other option is to ask staff to bring back some proposal clarifying language, which then the commission has the ability to adopt or not adopt as part of the final order. And if staff brings back something you don't feel is clarifying, you don't have to accept it.
Me, once Nick pointed out that it's the green area, which is the preservation area. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Well, we'll give it a shot, and-
I think I'm comfortable with that. If staff feels it needs to be addressed, bring that back at our next meeting, and we can, we can pick it up at that point. Rest of the commission okay with that? Okay. So we are at time. For those in the audience and those watching on TV, there is another, two more meetings scheduled for deliberation on this. The second one was added at the end of last week. It's for Thursday, same time, same place, 11:30 to 1:30.
This Thursday?
This Thursday. And then the following one will be on the 12th, and that is a, the time is-
5:30 PM.
That's a 5:30 PM one. Again, it will be-
So in this room.
It will also be here. So that's where we'll go. We'll pick up with item number four. We also will touch base with Commissioner Baker, if he's at that meeting, to see if he has any outstanding substantive issues that he would like the commission to weigh in on, on some of the decisions that have already been made. But we are going to hopefully go back through another hour-plus of deliberations on each one of those at the next meeting. With that, we will adjourn.